Welcome, everybody, to the Isle of Palms City Council Municipal Inauguration. Today is Tuesday, January 7th. On behalf of the Isle of Palms City Council and all city employees, I welcome everyone to our municipal inauguration ceremony. Thank you for coming. This is always a great night, swearing in new council members for our city and our community. Our city staff and employees do an incredible job in making this night special. As per the agenda, we will have a social half hour following the swearing in. After this, we'll have our first order of business, which is the consideration of appointments to the various committees, followed by appointments to boards and commissions. Everyone is welcome to stay and watch our first order of business with our new council, and again, thank you all for coming. We're going to have the invocation by Pastor Phil Clark of St. Mark's Lutheran Church. Yes, sir, please. We have a, well, we did have.
I'd like to say to all of you, the City Council, on behalf of St. Mark's Lutheran Church, we congratulate you, and we wish you all of God's blessings as you make many choices and decisions for the people of this great city. So, thank you.
Let us pray. O mighty God, you have chosen these men and women to serve on the town city council, representing the interests and concerns of the good people of Isle of Palms. We are reminded through the words of St. Paul in Philippians, chapter 2, verse 4, "Let each of you look not to your own interest, but to the interest of others." O Lord, this night, as each of these men and women take the oath to serve their constituents, remind them, turning to you in all matters of governing, you must become greater, Lord, and we must always become less. Grant them courage to meet the challenges ahead and to make decisions that benefit all, not a few special interests. Give them allegiance true to their calling, and keep them in the palm of your hand confident that all things work together for them that love God and are called according to his purpose. Bless them with energy and faith to do the task you have called them to complete. We pray to your glory, and I pray in Jesus' name. Amen. For the first time ever, we're going to have a presentation of colors and pledge of allegiance by a combined Isle of Palms Police and Fire Department. stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to approve? Allow me to administer the oath of office, please, to our new council members.
Do I hear a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nays?
To swear.
Mr. Popson?
I, Kevin Popson.
I, Kevin Popson.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
I solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state and of the United States.
The Constitution of this state and of the United States.
As a council member of the city of the Isle of Palms.
As a council member of the city of the Isle of Palms.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
And will use my best endeavor to preserve.
And will use my best endeavor to preserve.
The peace and carry into effect.
The peace and carry into effect.
According to the new law.
According to the new law.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Philip Pounds.
I, Otis Rusty Freeman.
I, Otis Rusty Freeman.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
As a council member of the city of the Isle of Palms.
As a council member of the city of the Isle of Palms.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
And will use my best endeavor.
And will use my best endeavor.
To preserve the peace and carry into effect.
To preserve the peace and carry into effect.
According to the new law.
According to the new law.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
I, Philip Pounds.
I, Otis Rusty Freeman.
I, Otis Rusty Freeman.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state and of the United States.
The Constitution of this state and of the United States.
As a council member of the city of the Isle of Palms.
As a council member of the city of the Isle of Palms.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
And will use my best endeavor.
And will use my best endeavor.
To preserve and the peace and carry into effect.
To preserve the peace and carry into effect.
According to the new law.
According to the new law.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
I, Philip Pounds.
I, Otis Rusty Freeman.
I, Otis Rusty Freeman.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state and of the United States.
The Constitution of this state and of the United States.
As a council member of the city of the Isle of Palms.
As a council member of the city of the Isle of Palms.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
And will use my best endeavor.
And will use my best endeavor.
To preserve and the peace and carry into effect.
To preserve the peace and carry into effect.
According to the new law.
According to the new law.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
I, Philip Pounds.
I, Otis Rusty Freeman.
I, Otis Rusty Freeman.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state and of the United States.
The Constitution of this state and of the United States.
As a council member of the city of the Isle of Palms.
As a council member of the city of the Isle of Palms.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
And will use my best endeavor.
And will use my best endeavor.
To preserve and the peace and carry into effect.
To preserve the peace and carry into effect.
According to the new law.
According to the new law.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Otis Rusty Freeman.
I, Otis Rusty Freeman.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
As a council member of the city of the Isle of Palms.
As a council member of the city of the Isle of Palms.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
And will use my best endeavor.
And will use my best endeavor.
To preserve and the peace and carry into effect.
To preserve the peace and carry into effect.
According to the new law.
According to the new law.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You have a. I, James Manley Ward.
I, James Manley Ward.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
As a council member of the city of the Isle of Palms.
As a council member of the city of the Isle of Palms.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
And will use my best endeavor.
And will use my best endeavor.
To preserve the peace and carry into effect.
To preserve the peace and carry into effect.
According to the new law.
According to the new law.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You have a. I, Otis Rusty Freeman.
I, Otis Rusty Freeman.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
As a council member of the city of the Isle of Palms.
As a council member of the city of the Isle of Palms.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
And will use my best endeavor.
And will use my best endeavor.
To preserve the peace and carry into effect.
To preserve the peace and carry into effect.
According to the new law.
According to the new law.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You have a. I, James Manley Ward.
I, James Manley Ward.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
As a council member of the city of the Isle of Palms.
As a council member of the city of the Isle of Palms.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
And will use my best endeavor.
And will use my best endeavor.
To preserve and the peace and carry into effect.
To preserve the peace and carry into effect.
According to the new law.
According to the new law.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You have a. I, James Manley Ward.
I, James Manley Ward.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will do my best.
And I will do my best.
Of my ability.
Of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect.
And preserve, protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
As a council member of the city of the Isle of Palms.
As a council member of the city of the Isle of Palms.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
And will use my best endeavor.
And will use my best endeavor.
To preserve the peace.
To preserve the peace.
And carry into effect.
And carry into effect.
According to the new law.
According to the new law.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I don't think y'all get to go back to your seats now. Y'all get to come on this side. I'm going to say just a couple of words, I promise, no less than five pages. No more than ten, but I'm lying. This is an exciting night, swearing in three new council members and one reelected member. The Isle of Palms was incorporated in 1953, making us 67 years young. We hold the elections every two years, so tonight marks our 33rd municipal inauguration. Holding a public office is an honor, one where, at this level of government, we can actually see results. What we do is not about us, the council member, but doing what is right for our residents. They, you are our bosses, and our job is to represent you, not our personal agendas. To me, there is no greater honor than serving one's community. In many ways, it is a thankless job, but personally, it's the most rewarding position I've ever held, and one that I hope that each of our existing council members and our incoming council members feels too. Our island paradise is just that, a paradise, but one that needs to be protected, not just for now, but for future generations. Change is always happening. What was the norm 67 years ago has changed drastically since then. So have I. Our jobs are to. Don't say a word. Our jobs are to constantly stay abreast of these changes, and to revise and to add ordinances as they are needed. In the 1967 movie, The Graduate, Dustin Hoffman was told by a friend of his parents that plastics were the future, and today, we have those same plastics floating around our oceans. Our island has led the environmental movement locally, and I challenge each of you to continue leading our island, looking out for future generations. Let's be leaders and not followers. I'm especially proud of what we have accomplished over the last two years, and I know that this council will continue in a positive direction that we are going. Just some of the, we've got some grasp back there of some of our accomplishments, but in the last two years, we've had the completion of 2018 beach renursment, the completion of Phase 2 drainage. We're working on the design and implementation of Phase 3 drainage. We're working with three drainage outfalls at 41st, 36th, and 30th avenues. That's a challenge, a big challenge for our city administrator and everybody else. We have SCDOT coming out quarterly nowadays to help clean ditches. We've got EDs that used to come once a year, now coming three times a year to help clean ditches. Plus, we're working on hotspots around the island. We put $500,000 in the budget to work on these hotspots. Design and engineering of the public safety building is an estimated 6.2 million. We are working on now having trailers delivered, and we'll probably start construction after the 1st of March. This is a big project, and we need to keep our public safety officials safe in where they live, protecting us. Our Public Works Building was overhauled this past year. Again, we hired a new employee over there, plus it was so outdated. We put in three new gas tanks at the Marina over here at the Public Works Department. Improved parking, and there's so much more, but I'm not even going to sit there and list them all, but we do have lists back there, and they're online, so please go to iop.net, and you can find those. And most importantly, I'd like to thank y'all for coming here tonight, and I'd like to thank the families who allowed their spouses, their husbands, their better halves to run for council, because it's because of y'all allowing them to serve our community. Thank y'all. And more than anything else, welcome aboard to our new council members and our reelected council member. Thank y'all. Benediction. Pastor Phil Clark, St. Mark's Lutheran Church. This is great, I get to bless you twice. Let us pray. Lord, if it's not for your favor, we would all flee. We thank you for this great city, for the opportunities you provide us. We ask that these are new leaders, and those who have been here established will work together as a cooperative team. We ask that they be blessed in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Thank you. Do I hear a motion to go into recess?
Second.
No discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's have some cupcakes. Okay, we are coming out of recess. It is now officially 6:45. Please excuse me, but I've got a lot of reading to do here. I'd like to acknowledge that both the press and the public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. This is the consideration of appointments of members to standing committees for 2020. Since there are multiple nominees and candidates for standing committees, the first order of business is to discuss and select the method of voting for the appointments. No new nominations may be considered at this meeting prior to the votes. The purpose of the special council meeting on December 3rd, 2019, was for the consideration of nominations to standing committees. We have a chart below. Robert Rules offers multiple methods for the election of nominees to a committee. The first one is a voice vote. When there is more than one nominee for a given office, in a voice election or an election by raising your voice or showing of hands, the candidates are voted in the order to which they were nominated. As soon as one of the nominees receives a majority vote, which in this case is five, the chair declares him or her elected. The same procedure follows until the seats are filled and no votes are taken on the remaining nominees for that office. The process. If the voice vote method is selected, the chair will call for a vote on the nominees for each committee in the order that nominations were received. The candidates receiving the majority, again, five votes, are declared elected by the mayor. After three candidates are elected by receiving the majority vote, no votes are taken on the remaining candidates. The same process will be followed for the remaining committees. That's the voice vote. The option is, the other alternative is to ballot vote. In the cases where there is no requirement that a vote be by ballot, a ballot vote can be ordered by the majority vote of council. A ballot will be distributed for each committee, and the order of voting for each committee membership will follow the order by which the nominations were received. The voting of the membership for each committee will be done separately. Once the membership for the committee is elected, the vote for the next committee will follow. During the vote, members have the same number of votes as there are seats available. Therefore, in the first round of voting, each member will have three votes. Members should not vote for no more than three candidates on the same ballot. Members shall not vote more than once for the same candidate. If a member votes for more choices than a position to be elected, the vote is considered illegal, and we've got our legal team here to keep it straight. If a member votes for fewer choices than the positions to be elected, the vote is legal, and those votes count. If, after the first round of voting, only one member receives a majority, members will have up to two votes in the second round of voting to elect the remaining two members to serve on the committee. After the vote, the city administrator will collect all ballots, along with the city administrator, city treasurer, and city clerk. They will go into the judges' chambers to count and record the ballots and prepare a report with the votes received for each office. The report will be submitted to the chair, me, the mayor, who will read the report and then declare the results of the election. In each case where a candidate receives a majority, the mayor shall declare the candidates elected. If three candidates receive a majority vote, they are elected to serve on that committee. If no candidate receives a majority vote, members keep voting until someone receives a majority vote. Could be a long night. When repeated balloting is necessary, no candidate may be removed from the next ballot unless they voluntarily withdraw the consideration. If more candidates receive a majority vote than there are seats available, those candidates receiving the highest votes are considered elected. If less than three candidates receive a majority vote, those who receive a majority are elected, and all the candidates remain as candidates for the necessary repeated balloting. The balloting is repeated as many times as necessary to obtain a majority vote for the remaining seats. If repeated balloting is necessary, Ron will distribute new ballots and follow the same process until three members are elected to each committee. City council is monitored while staff is counting the votes. The recordings, we are being livestreamed. Just keep our conversations nice and, you know, tell jokes or whatever, but keep it fun. So, do I hear a motion for what type of way we want to vote? Do we want to have a ballot, or do we want to have a voice?
No requirement that a vote be by ballot. A ballot vote can be ordered by the majority vote of council. A ballot will be distributed for each committee and the order of voting for each committee membership will follow the order by which the nominations were received. The voting of the membership for each committee will be done separately. Once the membership for the committee is elected, the vote for the next committee will follow. During the vote, members have the same number of votes as there are seats available. Therefore, in the first round of voting, each member will have three votes. Members should not vote for no more than three candidates on the same ballot. Members shall not vote more than once for the same candidate. If a member votes for more choices than positions to be elected, the vote is considered illegal. And we've got our legal team here to keep it straight. If a member votes for fewer choices than positions to be elected, the vote is legal and those votes count. If, after the first round of voting, only one member receives a majority, members will have up to two votes in the second round of voting to elect the remaining two members to serve on the committee. After the vote, the city administrator will collect all ballots, along with the city administrator, city treasurer, and city clerk. They will go into the judges' chambers to count and record the ballots and prepare a report with the votes received for each office. The report will be submitted to the chair, me, the mayor, who will read the report and then declare the results of the election. In each case where a candidate receives a majority, the mayor shall declare the candidates elected. If three candidates receive a majority vote, they are elected to serve on that committee. If no candidate receives a majority vote, members keep voting until someone receives a majority vote. Could be a long night. When repeated balloting is necessary, no candidate may be removed from the next ballot unless they voluntarily withdraw the consideration. If more candidates receive a majority vote than there are seats available, those candidates receiving the highest votes are considered elected. If less than three candidates receive a majority vote, those who receive a majority are elected and all other candidates remain as candidates for the necessary repeated balloting. The balloting is repeated as many times as necessary to obtain a majority vote for the remaining seats. If repeated balloting is necessary, Ron will distribute new ballots and follow the same process until three members are elected to each committee. City council is monitored while staff is counting the votes. The recordings, we are being livestreamed. Just keep our conversations nice and, you know, tell jokes or whatever, but keep it fun. So, do I hear a motion for what type of way we want to vote? Do we want to have a ballot or do we want to have a voice? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we have a ballot voting.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor of a ballot voting signify by raising your arm, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those in the nay? The highest of it would be ballot voting.
Should we have a pop quiz before we? Y'all think he could pass it?
Woo! Want me to read that again? Did you have any questions?
No, no. We're going to recess.
Okay, now, the way we do this is, as per our ordinances, we go according to our ordinances down the line. The first one in our ordinances is public safety. I nominated Ryan Buchanan, Randy Bell, and Susan Smith. Councilmember Bell rejected his nomination and nominated Ryan Buchanan, Jimmy Ward, Philip Pounds. The nominees are as follows: Ryan Buchanan, Susan Smith, Jimmy Ward, Philip Pounds. I'm glad I don't have to read that again.
You're going to get tired.
Thank you, sir. I got one. Thank you.
No, thank you. So, one question. Do you have to vote for three?
No.
True.
Is that correct?
Right.
You do not have to vote for three if you don't want to.
Correct. You can only vote no more than three. You don't have to go through three.
Right.
Hold it down.
It's folding, yes.
Yeah, we can do airplanes.
All right, we'll be right back.
Now, Jimmy Ward had a joke he told yesterday, and I'm going to ask him to repeat it. It was actually pretty good.
Is it clean?
It's very clean.
All my jokes are clean. Well...
Almost.
I don't know if you'll like it or not, but I was watching this show on the History Channel last weekend about the navies from Norway and from Sweden. There's an interesting thing, they're the only navies in the world that have barcodes on the side of their ships. You know, so why do they do that? And then they explained it to us later that when the ships come in, that they can... ready? Scan the navium.
All right, all right, I'm sorry.
Don't do that again.
Don't push your day down.
All right, I won't. I've tried it.
Motion to go into recess.
I make a motion for no more Jimmy jokes. I'm sorry, I had to do that.
Thanks.
You're welcome. You're friends, boy.
Right. Can't embarrass each other, right?
Yes, sir.
My wife would say, "What? I don't give a..."
You're in trouble, sir. This is recorded, though.
You better hope that doesn't get to her what you said.
I won't tell.
So, a serious question about this, Julia. So, let... do you... let's say that you reject being on the committee. Do you reject before the ballot is taken or after?
After.
After.
You would be rejecting the appointment if you were...
If you were voted in. You would say, "I declined the seat." Thank you.
Seems like it'd be a lot more efficient if we could, if someone wanted to... So, declines to...
Right.
To reject their nomination.
Ahead of time. I don't see why not. That's... We have... We have... This...
Well, this is part of it.
Ad nauseam.
It says it would be better to... the wording in the Robert rules. It doesn't say you can't. It says it would be better to, which is a little bit ambiguous.
I'm going to stick with the attorney's opinion.
Yeah, big Christmas. Yes. Big Christmas.
A pretty good time.
What's the next committee?
Public Works. It's the order that we report. Yeah.
Jump roll?
Well, I personally, I don't think it's huge. Usually in America, we're just... for this reason.
Okay. Number of votes cast were 27. Necessary for election is five. Ryan Buchanan received nine.
He has a majority vote and he's declared.
And how about other majorities? Okay. Another majority vote, James Manley Ward, nine. Philip Pounds, eight votes. So, we have a public safety committee. One round of voting, that's pretty good.
Is it Pounds Buchanan?
Okay, moving on. Public Works. Mayor Carroll nominated Ryan Buchanan, Randy Bell, Kevin Popson. Councilmember Bell rejected his nomination and nominated Philip Pounds, Susan Smith, Kevin Popson. Councilmember Buchanan nominated Jimmy Ward. The nominees are as follows: Ryan Buchanan, Kevin Popson, Philip Pounds, Susan Smith, and Jimmy Ward. Ballots. Thank you, sir.
Kind of jokes you guys got in the judges' chambers. Done.
Oh, okay. Okay, so let me... Okay.
What was your Christmas, Mr. Ward?
I don't know. I just went up to my sister. She's got five-year-old twin friends.
What'd you get? We just have to think about this.
They were trying to...
But these are no illegal places.
It's great.
Columbia.
And her son lives in a gated community. They're all young families. He's Charlie's just turned 39. He's CPA.
Yeah, we just did... We went over to Stacy's. Stacy's house, over 200 phone from...
Everybody like, "What are you going to do?"
Christmas brunch. Grandsons, hopefully we have to go back.
But he works for a...
And we had our family saying, "My sisters..."
Real estate leases.
We met all them in Columbia the week before.
Commercial real estate, all that works.
So, we had all that out. She drives all over the world. All families.
He's a corporate. Yeah, he's taking vice president. Of course, they got 50 vice presidents. But he's only been seven years, so he's done it well. And I was talking to him, I was very surprised, you know, I talked to him. While we hear about, is brick and mortar's going.
Two daughters, one grandchild.
Well, he gets paid so many. And, you know, they got to get a reasonable compensation. Stacy and Thomas live down in the country.
Maybe it's there. And of course, Clay's away.
I just kind of like...
All of her siblings.
It's been a few years since I lived in Staten. Many years ago, I lived in Staten. It was... They were basically saying... Probably 10 years ago, but I was seeing some all my retail stuff. I didn't know. It was kind of ridiculous.
She said she was...
How much is done out? No vote for the cog.
I mean, even though we've... I have three sisters.
Don't you dare!
All of us just don't really get help, you know.
I'm watching.
You have mom and dad, you know.
He said...
And, you know, they were all...
Your first question.
And I was eagerly waiting. And that's a good thing.
Y'all looking at me? No vote for the cog. Oh, I'm sorry.
People watch retail. The trick is groceries are...
Okay, ballot election for Public Works Committee. Number of votes cast, 25. Necessary for election, five. Ryan Buchanan received one. Kevin Popson received six, elected. Philip Pounds received eight, elected. Susan Smith received eight, elected. Jimmy Ward received two. And illegal votes, zero. So, we have Kevin Popson, Philip Pounds, and Susan Smith elected. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to decline my nomination for this committee.
You are declining your nomination.
So, you are declining the appointment?
The appointment. Okay, so I need to look at our...
Yes. Okay, so...
Thanks, Robert.
So, do we need a two...
There are two remaining candidates for that committee.
Uh-huh.
We would need to repeat the balloting of the remaining two candidates. You all would be making a vote for one candidate because none of the remaining two candidates received a majority. Therefore, we need to repeat the balloting to fill that vacant.
Those two candidates are who?
Jimmy Ward and Ryan.
Ryan Buchanan.
Can we have a debate? Let's see Ryan.
But is there an avenue for discussion?
No.
Oh, okay.
This has been so well researched. So, I know our able-bodied man, Ron, is putting this to...
What we need to do is for all of you, because the ballots that we have include all five candidates.
Correct.
Strike out those that have been elected. So, you would be striking out Kevin Popson, who rejected the appointment, Philip Pounds and Susan Smith. So, you would be making... issuing one vote between Ryan Buchanan and Jimmy Ward.
There's a future in consulting for other cities on this.
Desiree, I don't... or maybe Julia. I mean, since there's only two candidates, can we not just take a post-it and write a name?
Do you want to have already voted on a motion to use the ballot?
Oh, is that... oh, this is not valid, okay. I'm sorry. I...
It's okay. This is a first...
Post-it notes are not ballots.
In 67 years, first time we've ever done this. It's been well researched.
I don't doubt that. I'm going to go to sleep with my Robert's Rules of Order in the end of the night.
It'll put you to sleep, I promise you.
About three pages.
Speaking of which, we're going to miss you. We can livestream you, you know.
I like it. Oh, you got something for us. Thank you, sir.
We vote for one, right?
One vote.
Do you have to vote for one? Desiree, do you have to vote?
You got a long process.
This job doesn't pay enough. This is kind of fun.
They're going to get their exercise tonight going back and forth.
This is... Look at it, man. A little bit like a chess game.
Yeah. Yeah, it's some training.
Look at the bright team tonight.
And one has three.
Two.
Personnel and real properties on the two that got nominated.
The whole community press, I mean, all going back to the same way. And...
Maybe this will take us a moment.
Right, that's what I said. I said, "Is that..." If you're elected to three...
Yeah, for every...
I think it's a lot of...
Me, too.
Nice. I guess you can't really make it...
Yeah.
But I really...
Honestly, about discussion part.
Like a wrestling match. That lazy.
I see. You're listening to this.
Yeah.
Like, I'm...
Yeah. Yeah, I go by your place.
Yeah.
I did. That was... Yeah, some meat stuff. Yeah. I don't know why. That means just...
Remember, your mics are livestreaming.
We can only do so much.
None of us judge the union.
All right, I'm going to keep my jokes to myself.
Well, I tried one.
Spot.
Desiree, can I look at our faces?
Okay, second round of voting for Public Works. Total number of votes cast, seven. Necessary for election, five. We have no one who received five.
Correct. You did three.
All right, so Ryan Buchanan received three, Jimmy Ward received four. We have to vote again.
Correct.
Is there a wrestling match after or something?
All right, some of these do have the other three candidates stripped.
Just cross them out.
Just cross them out, please. Just leave Ryan Buchanan and Jimmy Ward as the candidates for consideration.
Ryan, I don't... Can we use post-it?
Always willing to. Well, Kevin, this is on you.
Yeah.
It's what happens when you get nominated for a whole bunch of committees.
Need another cupcake.
There's no way around it. The next...
Yep, the next one.
Yeah. It's a little dark, isn't it?
Yeah.
Wait, what's that?
Well, it should be majority of the votes. He's going to stick on recreation, I guess.
Oh, yeah.
Well, he has to.
That would make sense.
But this is... We have to go this way.
It is on all of us. It is majority, so majority of council is majority.
Right.
Right? Yeah.
Is the wording? Could the wording be interpreted different ways? Potentially?
Yeah, because it asks for majority. Ask for majority, majority of council.
Of the vote? A majority vote?
So, you still have to pick a fight with your two. These chairs are... Yeah. I have a hard time figuring out it.
There's no halfway.
No, and the curve on this just is...
Did you vote?
I mean, it has to be that room. I always... I felt bad I went in this chair, but I was always crowding. I was always looking here.
Right.
I was always...
Right.
Oh, no, no.
So, John, this is your first chair, right?
Why else? It's from the man on the end.
Does this, uh... does this thing adjust up and down or just back? What's it do?
I like it, see?
It's a comfortable chair. It's pretty light.
Rather getting her footsteps in. Desiree's getting up pretty fast.
Okay. I can read the same thing all over again. Number of votes cast, seven. Necessary for election, five. Ryan Buchanan received three, Jimmy Ward received four. No change.
No, I received minus four. But where do you go, Ryan? Congratulations. I don't... Point of order.
Can we defer and come back? No.
So, a member can voluntarily withdraw from consideration. However, if that happens, then we need to repeat the balloting because the third member has to be elected by a majority vote. In order to go to meeting five votes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, if we wanted to have a two-thirds vote for another nominee, could we do that?
Correct. In order to do that, the committee, city council, needs to entertain a motion to add an action item to the agenda because the agenda currently, as it was advertised, does not include consideration of nominations. But the group could entertain a motion to add that item on the agenda. It would require a two-thirds vote, which would be six votes. After that, a new motion could be introduced to consider new nominations for Public Safety Committee. That also has to be approved by council by a two-thirds vote.
Just for everybody's sake, yes, sir?
I'd like to have pointed over, but in council, we can abstain from votes, which I would assume this would be an abstention from a vote, but you have to give a reason for not voting. Why is not everybody mandated to vote on these committee assignments?
It doesn't talk about abstentions in this context. I would disagree to vote.
Okay.
So, Jimmy, if I may, just to your point, and I don't disagree with it, but we may have this scenario repeat itself over and over.
So, I'm going to...
So that we don't have to do it each...
I'm going to throw myself under the rug to try to keep us from staying here all night. If somebody wants to consider me...
I nominate Jimmy Carroll.
Well, we have to have a two-thirds vote for a nomination.
Well, I just nominated. Then we have a vote. We have a second to vote.
I'd like to make a motion that we entertain, that we entertain new nominations.
Okay, first, we need to move to a new agenda.
I make a motion to amend the agenda to include nominations.
Second.
Nominations for Public Safety.
For... can I just say for all?
Public Works.
Can I just say for any committee?
We're going to have to do that. No, it has to be for this one.
We have only Public Works now, so I recommend that the new could be, or to consider new nominations for Public Works.
That's my motion. I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda to include nominations for Public Works.
Do I get a second?
You got one.
Any discussion? Here are none? Okay. Do we have a nomination?
Hit the vote.
All of those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any nays? Nay.
All right, we need to count. Okay, yes, please hold your...
The three nays, raise your hand, please. The three nays? Okay.
So, now, the motion was to add this action item to the agenda. Now, there needs to be a new motion to entertain a nomination, a different nomination.
Do we hear a motion to have a new nomination?
So, moved.
Who?
You got Jimmy Carroll.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. I'm throwing myself under the bus for y'all. Okay.
You may ask, are there any other nominations?
Are there any other nominations?
Does there have to be a second for a nomination?
No.
No, okay.
So, we didn't need...
So, we have two names, Rusty Streeman and Jimmy Carroll.
Now, we need to close the nominations.
Close the nominations?
Is that a motion, by motion?
Correct.
Okay, now, we're going to create a new ballot?
I'd like to make a motion to close nominations for Public Works.
Second.
Okay.
We need to vote on closing the nominations.
Do I hear all those in favor of closing the nominations? Say aye. Any nays?
Okay, we'll create a ballot for you all, so that will... that may take some time.
It'll be all four.
You will have three candidates.
Three?
Four candidates.
Four candidates. With one vote.
Only one vote, correct.
It's going backwards.
This is going to work out better.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
That's exactly right.
Right. Same thing's going to happen. But you're still going to have a majority.
Wait, wait, wait.
Because...
Because it throws up your spreadsheet.
No, because if we do this, it'll be complicated. So, it's going to be pretty complicated.
Donny, this is off of y'all.
Rec committee is going to be easy.
I'm surprised Donny didn't bring some popcorn.
We brought cupcakes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, I mean, it's not that I'm not against.
Yeah, right, right.
Go for one.
Just for one.
You have as many votes as seats available, therefore...
We have.
Okay.
So, what...
Jimmy Ward, three. So, we need to go...
And Jimmy Carroll received one, too.
Yeah, yeah, I said, yeah. So, we still don't have a majority, so round five.
Local candidates may withdraw voluntarily, if so, if they so wish. If they do not, they will consider continue to be considered.
I would like to withdraw.
I'd like to withdraw.
I'll withdraw.
Why don't we do that in the first? Should we do that more than that, please? Who's withdrawing?
Well, that would make it easier.
We still wish, because Mr. Streepman only received four votes.
So we still gotta vote again?
We still have to vote again. He needs to be elected by a majority.
This is all by law that we're doing this.
We don't know who this Robert guy was.
Oh, yeah, just good. John, quit making me laugh.
This is just the beginning.
You have to laugh. I know you got to.
Of your next four years.
Sarah?
Ron, do I get one?
Nope. See it right here.
Have y'all ever watched that TV show Survivor?
Alright, the next one will be quick. The next two will be quick.
Taking a hint for the teeth. It is kind of tough to keep thinking. Discussing.
I don't know why anybody's here. It couldn't be any reason.
Oh, dear. For one reason. For one reason.
You sure you don't have another joke?
Not in this rough crowd here.
The age of someone, she's just telling the other one again, he won't remember.
She's smiling.
I have very good news.
Hey. We didn't have a choice, so we...
On the fifth round of voting, the tellers report number of votes cast were eight. Necessary for election, five. Rusty Streepman received eight votes, unanimous. Thank you, sir. Wow. Okay, moving on. Rusty, you can learn about drainage.
Yeah.
And there's a lot to learn.
Actually, that's...
So hang out with you guys.
That's a fun committee, actually.
It is, it's...
You get a lot done there.
Especially in this day and age. Recreation Committee. Mayor Carroll nominated John Moy, Susan Smith, and Kevin Popsen. Nominees are John Moy, Susan Smith, and Kevin Popsen.
Do we need to accept by acclamation?
No, we can't.
Why not? Why not? Because...
Sounds reasonable.
Yes.
Let me count and see if there's any.
Government, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Total number of votes cast were 27. Necessary for election, five. John Moy received nine. Susan Smith received nine. Kevin Popsen received nine, and a legal vote, zero.
Perfect. That's the way to do it.
Congratulations.
We declare John Moy, Susan Smith, and Kevin Popsen elected for Recreation. Thank y'all so much. Okay, moving on. Personnel. Mayor Carroll nominated John Moy, Philip Pounds, Rusty Streepman. Councilmember Bell nominated John Moy, Rusty Streepman, and Jimmy Ward. The nominees are as follows. John Moy, Philip Pounds, Rusty Streepman, and Jimmy Ward.
That is for Personnel.
And that is for Personnel. Thank you, sir. Ron? Desiree, can I have these framed and put in the office?
Alright, we'll be right back.
If you get elected to this committee as well, you could declare another committee.
Yeah, he's one tax guy, so...
How much...
Sure enough.
Are you naming the five committees?
I mean, that's actually...
Dude, that's a curveball.
Four.
Are you watching the livestream over there?
Yeah.
You didn't see him waving himself?
There's a six-second delay.
Yes. It's alright, we're just...
Nobody brought popcorn?
That's called pizza. Pizza, pizza.
Well, that would be...
Ballot election number one, Personnel Committee. Tellers report 27 votes cast. Necessary for election, five. John Moy, nine votes, elected. Philip Pounds, seven votes, elected. Rusty Streepman, eight votes, elected. Jimmy Ward, three votes. Sorry. We have John Moy, Philip Pounds, and Rusty Streepman as our Personnel Committee.
Mr. Mayor, since I'm already on two, can I decline this one?
Yes, sir, you may.
Then I shall.
We will repeat the balloting unless there are, unless somebody wants to make a nomination, I'm sorry, a motion to open up nominations for Personnel. We will, you all will repeat the balloting and vote on the remaining candidates, so that that candidate can be elected by a majority.
I don't want to be on it. Desiree, how many people are gonna be on the ballot this time?
Um, only one.
Well, I'm gonna decline it if I'm elected. So I don't know if you wanna go through it or not.
Well, you can decline, you can reject your, withdraw yourself from...
Consideration.
From consideration.
That's what I'm doing right now.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda to include nominations for the Personnel Committee.
Second. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? I nominate Susan Smith.
Second.
What? She's on two.
The nominations, we need a new motion to open up...
I thought, okay. We need a nomination for, a motion for new nominations.
Make some move.
Second.
So the motion is to reopen nominations for the Personnel Committee.
To reopen nominations. And that's to be a two-thirds vote, correct?
Correct. And that motion was made by?
Jimmy Ward.
Jimmy Ward and Mr. Ward.
And Mr. Moy.
Seconded by Moy.
Or was you made the motion?
I didn't.
I seconded it.
Oh, you said, I'm sorry.
Kevin Popsen seconded the motion, so we need a two-thirds vote.
That's what's nice about having y'all out there, you can see us.
Yes. We did a two-thirds vote on that.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? I nominate Susan Smith.
Second.
What?
You don't need to say it.
The nominations, we need a new motion to open up...
I thought, okay. We need a nomination for, a motion for new nominations.
Make some move.
Second.
So the motion is to reopen nominations for the Personnel Committee.
To reopen nominations. And that's to be a two-thirds vote, correct?
Correct. And that motion was made by?
Jimmy Ward.
Jimmy Ward and Mr. Ward.
And Mr. Moy.
Seconded by Moy.
Or was you made the motion?
I didn't.
I seconded it.
Oh, you said, I'm sorry.
Kevin Popsen seconded the motion, so we need a two-thirds vote.
That's what's nice about having y'all out there, you can see us.
Yes. We did a two-thirds vote on that.
Okay. All those in favor by reopening, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Now you could entertain nominations for the Personnel Committee.
I'd like to nominate Susan Hill Smith.
Second.
You don't need a second.
Can I decline that? Can I decline now?
Correct.
I'm declining.
Okay.
I'm good.
Nobody left.
Thank you.
How about... John, I mean...
I'm on this one.
You're picking on twice. You just... Such a good job.
Got a question, point of order for the attorney. Can we defer action on this and go ahead and vote on the last committee and come back to it? No, we gotta go in sequence.
Yeah. I nominate Jimmy Carroll.
Second.
No.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Second, whatever.
Motion to close nominations.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Close nominations.
Aye.
I see where I'm going.
Raise your hands, all those that are voting in favor. To close the nominations, thank you.
You're going straight to Personnel. That's what my mama said. You're going straight to Personnel. Thought you'd get through four years without being on a committee. Surprise, surprise. It's what I do for our city.
Besides, I can be my fearless lead.
Kinda rusty. That's right.
Two prayers.
Okay.
Almost telling them.
That's it.
I wonder. What, he's gonna take away your...
About what?
He's gonna get elected on that.
A wage?
They, I mean, I can give them credit for, yeah, all the work they've been doing for really the last two weeks, looking at every scenario, and this is one of those scenarios.
The only other thing. I know you know personnel with John Moy. John Moy, man, he's stupid. Jimmy can't do that. I don't know about personnel, John.
What happens to these young people? Their brain cells or synapses connect.
We'll be sitting here with our mouths up.
What? What, what? You're gone.
That's what I told the girl. I said, "Hang it out long as you want to."
Okay. Fourth round of voting. Total cast votes nine, necessary for election five. Ryan Buchanan received one. Jimmy Carroll received one. Rusty Streepman received four. And...
Is Mr. Ward?
He's disqualified.
Does writing underneath his name?
It says okay.
Okay. Jimmy Ward, three. So, we need to go? Yeah, yeah, I see, yeah. So, we still don't have a majority, so round five. I would like to withdraw.
I'd like to withdraw.
I withdraw.
Well, that would be easier.
Still, we've seen Mr. Streepman only received four votes.
So, we still gotta vote again?
We still have to vote him. He needs to be elected by a majority of candidates.
This is all by law that we're doing this. Have y'all ever watched that TV show Survivor?
I don't know why anybody's here. It couldn't be any reason.
You sure you don't have another joke?
This is a rough crowd here. The age of someone, she just tell the other one he got it wrong. She's smiling.
I have very good news.
We didn't have a choice, so we...
On the fifth round of voting, the tellers report number of votes cast were eight, necessary for election five. Rusty Streepman received eight votes, unanimous. Thank you, sir. Wow. Okay, moving on. Rusty, you can learn about drainage.
Yeah.
And there's a lot to learn.
Actually, that's...
We'll hang out with you guys.
That's a fun committee, actually.
It is, it's...
You get a lot done there.
Especially in this day and age. Recreation Committee, Mayor Carroll nominated John Moy, Susan Smith, and Kevin Popsen. Nominees are John Moy, Susan Smith, and Kevin Popsen.
Do we need to accept by acclamation?
No, we can't.
Why not? Be kept.
Governor, sir?
Listen to me.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Total number of votes cast were 27, necessary for election five. John Moy received nine, Susan Smith received nine, Kevin Popsen received nine, and illegal votes zero.
Perfect. That's the way to do it.
Congratulations.
We declare John Moy, Susan Smith, and Kevin Popsen elected for Recreation. Thank y'all so much. Okay, moving on, personnel. Mayor Carroll nominated John Moy, Philip Pounds, Rusty Streepman. Councilmember Bell nominated John Moy, Rusty Streepman, and Jimmy Ward. The nominees are as follows: John Moy, Philip Pounds, Rusty Streepman, and Jimmy Ward. And that is for Personnel. Thank you, sir. Desiree, can I have these framed and put in the office?
Okay.
I mean, that's actually...
Gee, that was a curveball.
Are you watching the livestream over there?
Yeah.
You didn't see him waving at himself?
There's a six-second delay.
Nobody brought popcorn? Let's call Peter. Peter, Peter. Ballot election number one, Personnel Committee. Tellers report 27 votes cast, necessary for election five. John Moy, nine votes, elected. Philip Pounds, seven votes, elected. Rusty Streepman, eight votes, elected. Jimmy Ward, three votes. Sorry. We have John Moy, Philip Pounds, and Rusty Streepman as our Personnel Committee.
Mr. Mayor, since I'm already on two, can I decline this one?
Yes, sir, you may.
Then I shall.
Decline.
We will proceed to balloting unless there are... unless somebody wants to make a nomination, I'm sorry, a motion to open up nominations for Personnel. We will, you all will proceed to balloting and vote on the remaining candidates so that that candidate can be elected by a majority vote.
So, I don't want to be on it. Desiree, how many people are gonna be on the ballot this time?
Uh, only one.
Well, I'm gonna decline it if I'm elected. So, I don't know if you wanna go through it or not.
Well, you can decline, you can reject your, withdraw yourself from...
Consideration.
From consideration.
That's what I'm doing right now.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda to include nominations for the Personnel Committee.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? I nominate Susan Smith.
Second.
The nominations, we need a new motion to open up.
I thought, okay. We need a nomination for, a motion for new nominations.
Make some move. Second.
So, the motion is to reopen nominations.
To reopen nominations. And that should be a two-thirds vote, correct?
Correct. And that motion was made by?
Jimmy Ward.
Jimmy Ward and Mr. Ward.
And Mr. Moy. Or was you made the motion?
I didn't.
I seconded it.
Oh, you said, I'm sorry.
Kevin Popsen seconded the motion, so we need a two-thirds vote.
That's what's nice about having y'all out there, you can see us.
We did a two-thirds vote on that.
Okay. All those in favor by reopening, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Now you could entertain nominations for the Personnel Committee.
I'd like to nominate Susan Hill-Smith.
Second.
Uh...
You don't need a second.
Can I decline that? Can I decline now? I'm declining.
Okay.
I'm good.
Nobody left.
Thank you.
I'm on this one.
Bet you on twice. You just, such a good job.
Got a question, point of order for the attorney. Can we defer action on this and go ahead and vote on the last committee and come back to it?
No, we gotta go in sequence.
I nominate Jimmy Carroll.
Second.
Are you sure? Okay. Second, whatever.
Motion, motion to close nominations.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close nominations?
Aye.
I see where I'm going.
Raise your hands, all those that are voting in favor. To close the nominations, thank you.
You're going straight to Personnel, that's what my mama said. You're going straight to Personnel. She'd get you four years. Surprise, surprise.
It's what I do for our city. Besides, I got John to feed my fearless league.
Kinda rusty.
That's right.
Two prayers. Okay. I wonder. Boy, you didn't want to take a wager there.
About what?
A wager?
Nickel?
I raise it to a dime. I'm a high roller.
You serious, aren't ya?
Why don't you just make them gold?
Well, these deal at one. Everybody else has got two. Pops, there's one.
Okay. Second round voting for Personnel Committee. Total number of votes cast were nine, necessary for election five. Jimmy Carroll, nine. Thank you, thank you. Acceptance. So, Jimmy Carroll is now on Personnel. That closes the Personnel Committee.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay. Last but not least, Real Property. Mayor Carroll nominated Jimmy Ward, Philip Pounds, Rusty Streepman. Councilman Bell nominated himself, Rusty Streepman, Ryan Buchanan. Councilman Ward nominated Kevin Popsen. This has been a learning experience.
Really? What have you learned? Don't do it, do it again?
Another 67 years?
Lord, I don't wanna do it again.
Mike Malone, he came, he was great. He was gone to North Charleston for Keith Sommies. He needed to come out here, wanted to see if I was really wearing time.
I'm surprised he was here, because there was a ceremony starting at 6:00 too. He was his in, right out. They sent me an invitation to this ceremony.
Yeah, I got, yeah, same thing.
Did you go to him?
He's a good judge, you know?
Yeah, he is a good judge.
If they ever come there one time and watch him? I mean, he does what they did to me when I was getting grown up. Give you a second chance, third chance. Here I am.
Here our mayor. He only gave you one more chance.
I had two arms to deal between.
Right.
Well, the jury's out, long time.
I can see what we want after this.
Boards and commissions, accommodations.
They even take them.
Yeah, this is all...
We can do that by voice vote.
Yeah, yeah, it's breeze.
Yeah, that's all voice vote, too, isn't it?
Except for that last one.
I'm really impressed with Desiree and Ron and Julia, been working on for the last two weeks, two weeks. Yeah, Romney is used to the mayor. Quite honestly, it works. I mean, I'm gonna go to Columbia next week for anti-drilling. I got the council mayors, I got South Carolina beach advocates. So, I was glad to let it go. Okay. First round, Real Property Committee. Tellers report 27 votes cast. Number of votes cast of 27, necessary for election five. Jimmy Ward received three. Philip Pounds received zero. Rusty Streepman received three. Randy Bell received six. Ryan Buchanan received nine. And Kevin Popsen received six. We have Randy Bell, Ryan Buchanan, and Kevin Popsen. Now we can kinda breeze along.
We have at least one, everybody is serving in at least one.
Yep.
Everybody.
So, how many people have two committees, raise a hand? How many? Two, two? Everybody has one committee, raise a hand. Okay. But everybody's got at least one committee. And of course, everybody's in real, in ways and means.
Correct.
Okay, Boards and Commissions, Accommodations, Tax Advisor Committee. Mayor, Council, Carroll nominated Malcolm Burgess, Sally Mullig, David Nelson, and Rusty Williamson. Do I hear a motion?
Some move.
Motion to approve those nominations.
Motion to approve? All those say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Hear none? So elected. Board of Zoning Appeals, Mayor Carroll nominated Elizabeth Kanson and Carolyn Hosher. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve those nominations.
Second.
The appointments.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Passes. Planning Commission, Mayor Carroll nominated Ron Denton and Lisa Stafford. All of the, do I hear a motion?
Some move.
Second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? So elected. City Officers. City Judge, Mayor Carroll nominated Judge Michael Maloney. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
I'm moving too fast, I'm sorry. There was a second down here? Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? City Attorney. Mayor Carroll nominated proudly Ms. Julia Copeland. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the appointment.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Assistant City Attorney. Mayor Carroll nominated Claude Thackett. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the appointment.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any nays? Unanimous. Carter, Board of Directors, Mayor Carroll nominated Jimmy Ward. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the appointment.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any nays? Unanimous. Charleston Visitors Bureau, Mayor Carroll nominated Susan Smith. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the appointment.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Unanimous. Charleston Berkeley Doorchester Council of Governments, Mayor Carroll nominated himself, Councilmember Ward nominated Philip Pounds. Mayor Carroll is withdrawing his name from the motion. Do I hear a motion to approve Philip Pounds?
Some move.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Unanimous. Who seconded?
I did.
Okay. Accomplishments, we've kinda gone over earlier. We don't need to rehash that. Do I hear?
Motion to adjourn.
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank y'all, thank y'all, thank y'all.